Good morning. I'm Cindy Jerome, and it is my privilege to serve as your town moderator and welcome you to town meeting. The Dumerson Town Meeting is hereby called to order. Please rise if you are able for the salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let me introduce who's sitting up front on the right. Our first, this is the Select Board. First is Paul Adler, then Todd Davidson, Tom Nolan, Alex Wilson, and Maria Glabach. Seated to your left is Town Clerk Lori Frichette and Town Treasurer Chris Brown. Thank you. I'd like to begin again this year with an invocation that originated in Danville, Vermont. We are gathered together. Ah, I'm hearing that it's difficult to hear because it's echoey and because the fan is Dan Bailey, who I will be thanking repeatedly today, is going to take care of the fan and perhaps more. Shall I repeat the introductions? You're all set with those? All right. I'd like to begin again this year with an invocation that originated in Danville, Vermont. We are gathered together in civil assembly as a community in a tradition that is older than our state itself. We come together to make decisions about our community. As we deliberate, let us advocate for our positions, but not at the expense of others. Let us remember that our neighbors with whom we disagree are good people with hopes and dreams as true and high as ours. And let us always remember that in the end, caring for each other in this community is of far greater importance than any difference we may have. We have lost members of our community since last town meeting. I'd like to take the time to read their names, and then we'll remember them with a brief moment of silence. June Howe, Don Hazelton, Elliot Freeman, Deborah Maya, Linda Hawkins, Patricia Worth, Anne Cuzzo, Susan Mahler, Kenneth Ives, Naomi Dunbar, Tim Janos, Nancy Chamberlain, Beverly Shafer, Jermaine Securo, Leslie Rothkopf, Annie Richards, Clarence Leonard, Neil Langford, Tom Stockton Jr., Robert Lavagie, Susan Herbert, Janice Nichols, John Reed, and Peter Thank you. Let's acknowledge and thank the scores of people who work to make our town as special as it is. On pages two and three of your town report, you'll find all our elected and appointed officials. If your name is listed, or if you are on the road crew, fire department, or rescue squad, Don't be shy. I'll remind you of the Adopt a Book program in the school library today. Our students and friends of the library count on us this day. Please adopt a book or two and consider volunteering to keep this important program going. We have a raffle announcement. As part of the final phase of the Dumerson School's playground and outdoor renovation, the school's family involvement team is raising money for a half-mile gravel community walking trail that will allow for walking, running, biking, wheelchairs, and strollers on a flat safe surface. The family involvement team is selling raffle tickets out today, out in the hallway today for three fabulous raffle baskets valued at up to $500 each that include local gift certificates, products, and artisan pieces. Tickets are $5 or three for $10 and can be purchased from the table in the hallway or here in the gym during lunch. Also, community member Tim Knapp has made the generous offer to match all raffle ticket sales or donations made toward the walking trail, and he encourages especially Dumerson alumni to give generously to this community cause. This meeting is being recorded by Brattleboro Community Television, BCTV. You can watch it later this week on Comcast Channel 1079, or stream it on demand at brattlebortv.org or on YouTube at Brattleboro Community TV. For anyone speaking at this meeting, please stand and state your name and hold the microphone that will be delivered to you right in front of your mouth so that those in the room and later at home watching on BCTV can hear you. Thank you. Please put your cell phones on vibrate. We have able assistants today running the microphones to speakers. Haley Cagliano, Phoebe Wagner, Benjamin Birchmore, Dawson Newton. Has Gretchen on? No. And my special thanks for the first time to Dan Bailey, the school's facility manager and our tech guy, for handling speaker and microphone problems and fan problems. Thank you, Dan. In order to speak at town meeting, you must be a registered Dumerson voter. It's our tradition to make an exception for those who represent Dumerson at the State House and for our school principal. Accordingly, if there's no objection, I will give the privilege of speaking to our principal, our legislators, and any other elected state officials who stop by so they may present their reports and answer your questions. Principal Julianne Egan will be giving an interesting presentation at the end of our meeting. I encourage you all to stay for that. You must be a registered voter to vote on any issue today. Please raise your hand if you are not a registered Dumerson voter. I see children too young to vote yet. Thank you for listening, kids. That's great. Yeah, you may not vote, but you know that. If you have difficulty standing, you have the option of holding a card. Recycled card, which is great. When a division of the house is called, when we might ask you to stand to indicate whether you're for or against something. Raise your hand now if you'd like one of these bright colored paper pieces if you haven't yet received one. I see one in the back. Keep your hand raised, please, so she can find you. Thanks so much. Oh. Phoebe, can you get another? Larry, with the hat on, to your right, to your right, right there, Phoebe. Oh, I remember. Oh, wonderful. Lots of people. Phoebe, we have another one. Yeah, right in front of you there. Great. Excellent. If there's no objection, we'll break for lunch around noon and remind me when it's 11 o'clock if we're not in the middle of something else or soon thereafter that Larry Lynch needs a show of hands of who's staying for lunch so they know how many sandwiches to make. It's provided by the good folks at The Grange, headed by Larry Lynch Jr. and Sally Mae. Today's menu is sandwiches, soup, and dessert, and you know the dessert alone is worth the $8 for adults and $4 for children. There is just one error in this year's town report. Page 68 has incorrect figures for this year's enrollment in our school. It's higher than the original town report suggests. Those on the town clerk's email list received the corrected version, and there are copies available in the back at the end of the table closer to the door. Thank you to those who put the town report together, including auditor and editor Ruth Hoffman, who is especially good at keeping those errors down. And thanks to the views of Dumerson led by Roger Turner. They do a great job preparing us for town meeting. We have talented and dedicated people creating these pieces for us, and we thank them. Lori Frichette, our town clerk, has prepared a helpful summary of the rules of town meeting. Copies are on a table in the back of the room, and I encourage you to familiarize yourself with it. A few highlights. Robert's Rules of Order govern town meeting. I'm really conscious of the echo. If I get too close exactly, can you still hear me if I stand back here? Okay, great. That's what I'll do. To speak, raise your hand. When I call on you, wait for the microphone and then state your name. Even if you have a commanding voice, it does not matter because you will not be heard when people watch the meeting later on TV. Each voter may speak twice and only twice to each motion. I will not call on you a second time unless everyone who wishes to speak has spoken once. Town officials and others with direct expertise on a question may impartially provide information in a neutral way without it counting as one of their two terms. Speeches from the floor are limited to 10 minutes, although your audience may grow restless after five minutes, so bear that in mind. I ask the members of our Board of Civil Authority to be ready to count if a division of the house is requested or a paper ballot is called. Just hop right out of your seat and come down front to help us with those things. All motions and remarks must be addressed to the moderator. That's me. This includes when you are asking or answering a question. That's under Robert's rules. There are no conversations or discussions between members of the body. That's you. Thank you. My job is to help you voters accomplish your will. If you're not sure how to do something, ask me. And again, please remember to state your name, or I will have to interrupt you to remind you. And I will also interrupt you if your microphone is here instead of here. And now we begin. You'll find the warning on page 78 of your town report. You have a question of privilege. And what is your question, Dan? And could you speak your name for everyone? And can you wait for a microphone? It's coming to you now. It's turned on, but it's not working. So you turn it on. Yeah?
Hello? Okay, here we go. I move that we make a slight modification to our typical format in that after the legislators have given their reporting out to us, as they typically do, I would like the Assembly to have an equal amount of time, if not more, to report out to our legislators. That's my motion.
The chair decides this question, and then you can overrule me if you wish. I don't think of town meeting as the place to report out to our legislators. We have many other means for doing that, where we can talk directly to our legislators, whereas the legislators would like to report out to all of us. So I'm...
I'd like to bring that to a board with the Senate.
Sure. So the... So if somebody keeps talking, but I think you might be done now, so just a reminder. Okay, the question before the body is...
I want to speak to the motion. What's the second?
This question is not debatable, Dan, so you had made your motion, so now I'm sorry you can't speak to the motion. I will explain the motion. My understanding is that Dan has suggested that we do things differently this year, and when the legislators report out to us, that we should allow an equal amount of time for people in the audience to present their thoughts and opinions to the legislators. And as chair, I'm saying that no, I don't think we should do that. And now the body has the chance to overrule me.
Point of order. My understanding of Robert's Rules, the motion, the act of...
A motion of privilege. So it needs to be seconded.
Dan, use the microphone.
So point of order. My understanding, I'm not an expert, but my understanding is that Robert's Rules requires a question of privilege to be, and when a motion is made, that it needs to be acted on like any other motion. So it does need a second. If it doesn't get a second, then it dies. But once it gets a second, then it needs to be treated like any other.
No, I made my cheat sheet. There's no second or point of privilege or point of order, and it is not, neither is debatable.
I made a motion.
No, you made a point of order or a point of privilege. That's not a motion. So, but I am putting it before the body. The question to you is, do you think that we should plan on an equal amount of time to that time our legislators are reporting out to us to give time for those in the body to tell the legislators your thoughts and ideas and opinions or not? So, all in favor of Dan's? I'm seeing hands. Can we get microphones here? Harold, hold on. Thank you, Phoebe. You go on. So state your name.
Harold Noel.
It's not on, Phoebe. Is it on on the line? Okay.
Harold Noel. I would request that we have a time limit on this question of people answering so it won't tie up the meeting so long. Five minutes.
Harold is saying we should have a time limit on this, on how long it would go on with the body speaking to legislators. I'm going to hold the vote first, but I see a question here. Can you stand, Molly? State your name.
Hi, I'm Molly Stoner. I just, we can't control the time that the legislators have, so if we were going to give half, we would need to ask them how much time they have and then divide that in half before they speak. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay, this isn't a debatable question, so Harold's was kind of a point of order, but I probably shouldn't have called on you without asking you first whether you were at a point of order or not. So, Joe, unless, again, it's not debatable, do you have a point of order or a point of something?
Madam Moderator, I move the question.
And that was Joe Cook. Okay, we are going to vote now. All in favor of Dan's motion to give equal time to the body to respond to the legislators, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
The noes appear to have it. The noes do have it. Thank you. You will find the warning on page 78 of your town report. Page 75 shows the minutes from last year, so with a bow to tradition, open your hymnals to page 78. Article 1 refers to the election of town officers by Australian ballot and so requires no action by this body. Article 2, shall the voters accept the auditor's report of the town accounts?
I move that we accept the auditor's report of town accounts.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, it has been moved and seconded that we authorize the Select Board to appoint a receiver of delinquent taxes. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, and we have accepted the auditor's report. Article 3, shall the voters authorize the Select Board to appoint a receiver of delinquent taxes?
I move that we authorize the Select Board to appoint a receiver of delinquent taxes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alex.
Bill Conley, do we now, or have we had one? Just, that's my question.
Do we worry if we have a voter voting on taxes?
Yep.
The Select Board is interrogating. Maria?
Yes, we do. We just recently appointed Lori Frichette. She stepped up, and with the help of our treasurer, Chris Brown.
The motion on the floor is to authorize, did we already vote on this? No. No, we didn't. And Ruth, you have your hand up?
Ruth Hoffman, one of the auditors. You read the, I'm sorry to say, you read the Article 3 for the vote for Article 2, so we're not on record as accepting the auditor's report because we read that the next one. That's why it seems familiar.
As an auditor.
This is Ruth Hoffman, who not only makes sure we don't have errors in the town report, but also gently points out when I screw it up. Thank you, Ruth. Okay, we're going to rewind, and we're going to go back to Article 2. And the motion on the floor is that we accept the auditor's report of the town accounts. I know you already voted, but let's vote for real this time. All in favor of accepting the auditor's report of town accounts, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Say no. The ayes have it. He's not a legal voter, no. And then Article 3, it has been moved and seconded that we authorize the Select Board to appoint a receiver of delinquent taxes. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. You have authorized the Select Board to appoint a receiver of delinquent taxes. Thank you. Article 4, shall the voters authorize raising the sum of $245,000 through taxes and appropriate said amount to the capital fund for future capital needs?
If y'all don't know me, I'm Todd Davidson, Select Board. I move that we raise the sum of $245,000 through taxes and appropriate said amounts to the capital fund for future needs.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alex. I will allow Todd to present.
The capital funds are on page 31 of the town report, if you want to take a look at them. We'll give you a little background on what our plan was and is for the next five years at least. The top set of lines discuss all the items that we have currently in the capital funds requirements for the next nine years, really, to see, because I took 2033 to 2034. It's a variety of trucks and backhoes. There's a fire engine on there that we're going to start paying on this year. What we did to try to avoid the capital budget going up and down every year, by just taking it year by year, we took the next five years, added up the total amount we've been needing, divided by five. So if you look at the bottom, the amount we're going to ask you every year for the capital fund is the same. It's $245,000. And if you look at the very bottom line, the balance forward, you'll see that there is some surplus at the end of each year, but by the time we hit 2028, 29, we're down to a surplus of $25,000. So the reason there is a little bit of surplus for the first few years is to cover the bigger purchases in year three, year four, and year five. So we want to try to balance it out, so instead of doing 245 this year, 100 next year, 320 the year after that, we're trying to level fund it so that those tax numbers stay the
I see a hand.
These benches are not easy to get out of. Of course, I'm not a kid. Eric Krueger, I'm questioning the assumption on this page of an interest rate of 0.18%. I looked at some of the funds held in other trusts earlier in the report that are earning a significantly larger interest amount for a smaller balance. If we're going to advance this money to keep things level, shouldn't we be investing this in a long-term note or certificate that's paying a better interest rate?
We discussed this across, it's come up in the last number of months, even your budget planning, on investing restricted funds, which are different than capital funds, and those are also in your guide, your cemetery fund, your Miller Fund, all those type areas. I don't have an answer on what we're going to put it into. We've had discussions, and we're going to have a discussion in a little bit on the 19th at our Select Board meeting, if you want to attend or Zoom. Chris Brown, Treasurer, has looked into this and has looked into the current town guidance on where we can put money, with risk, no risk. This is a little bigger issue. It's a very good point, and it has been brought up and has been thought about. But we have to figure out for a town what type of risk we're willing to take if we're putting it in a fund that may or may not lose money, the difference being, of course, something like a CD or STIF or a deposit where the money's guaranteed is a little bit of a different item. So I don't have the exact answer for you on where we could put it to make more money, but we're looking at those things.
Any other debate? Any other questions or concerns? It has been moved and seconded to raise the sum of $245,000 through taxes and appropriate said amount to the capital fund for future capital needs. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. You have appropriated the sum of $245,000 in capital fund. We are on to Article 5. Shall the voters authorize the purchase of a truck at a price not to exceed $100,000 and to pay for said purchase from the capital fund?
I move that we authorize purchase, purchase of a truck at the price...
Paul, can you speak into the microphone?
I move that we authorize the purchase of a truck at the price not to exceed $100,000 and pay for said purchase from the capital fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ruth. It has been moved and seconded that we authorize the purchase of a truck at a price not to exceed $100,000 and to pay for said purchase from the capital fund. Paul, do you want to explain this?
Basically, this is the replacement of a... This is the replacement of a truck that is being decommissioned. It's a new truck that we're going to be purchasing, and also on top of the new truck, it's going to, we're going to need to get it, we're going to need to get a sand spreader with the truck.
Thank you. Ruth, do you have a question? Microphone, please. Microphone, please.
A truck is a rather...
State your name.
Ruth Barton. A truck is a rather generic term. It goes all the way from a half-ton pickup up to these huge things they use in a mine. Where in this spectrum does this truck fall?
Ruth, I'm going to explain that we can't get too specific in the article because that ties our hands if a better deal comes along, or like we had a Kubota truck last time, and we had to actually change the article, the body had to change the article. But I'm sure Paul can tell you what kind of truck this one is.
It's a Ford 55.
Okay. Microphone?
Paul Menon, does this include a plow or a wing or any other pregnancies for a truck?
I'm going to defer that to Lee, who is right behind you.
Lee is being interrogated as Ruth Forman?
Lee Chamberlain. Yes, this, hopefully, will have a plow, no wing, and it all depends on what we get for the trade of the month that we're getting rid of.
Can you hold on a little longer?
Yes, this will be a plow, hopefully, no wing, with the same body. Be just like the last one you ordered.
But you said it depends on what you get for the trade, is that right?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Harold in the front?
What is the age, what is the age of the one we're turning in? And for what reason we're doing it? Is it mechanical problems?
I'm interrogating Lee again. Harold is asking, what is the age and the reason, age of the truck we're trading in and the reason we're doing so?
So it's in 2017. Even if we order the truck now, it will take one more wing before we actually get it. So it'll be nine years old. The reason for, we're on a cycle, just so it isn't repairs.
Any other questions on the motion on the floor? All right. It has been moved and seconded that we authorize the purchase of a truck at a price not to exceed $100,000 and to pay for said purchase from the capital fund. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. The ayes have it, and we will purchase a truck. Article six. Shall the voters authorize the first of five payments on a fire truck at a payment not to exceed $113,000 and to make said payment from the capital fund?
I move that we authorize the purchase of a truck at the, I'm sorry. I move that we authorize the first of five payments on a fire truck at a payment not to exceed $113,000 and make said payment from the capital fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded that we authorize the first of five payments on a fire truck at a payment not to exceed $113,000 and to make payment from the capital fund. You'll recall that at last time meeting, town meeting, we approved the purchase of this truck. You are today voting to authorize the expenditure of the money for the first payment on the truck we requested to buy. Are there any questions? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is that we authorize the first of five payments on a fire truck at a payment not to exceed $113,000 and to make said payment from the capital fund. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. We are going to pay for what we voted to buy. Excellent. Thanks. Any legislators here yet? Yes, there you are. Mike, come on up and talk to us.
Good morning, everybody. Sorry for the little delay. I have to, have to say hi to Ruth and Merrill over there. It's good to see, it's good to see everybody. We are living in interesting times. And just for those who don't know me, my name is Mike Morwitzki. If you speak Polish, it's Morwitzki. But I don't expect people to be able to pronounce that that easily. But it's good to be here. It's good to be back from Montpelier for this week, and it's great to see familiar faces here, like Bill Holliday sitting over there. I don't know if it feels like this for anybody else, but it's the last month, feels like it took five years. But I think that's one of the good things about being in Vermont. You know, it wasn't that long ago where we had this amazing shared experience when the eclipse came through. And just remembering how people were together and sharing that experience, whether they were here, whether they went up north, was one of those things that brought us together. It was a reminder that we can do that, we can be together. And we're going to hold up that aspiration in these times where there seems to be efforts to divide us. Wanted to share a little bit about the work in Montpelier this year and how it connects to what we're doing here. First of all, just to start with, those guiding things that help us get to where we're doing, those Vermont values that I try and bring to Montpelier, those values of community, working together, equality, fiscal prudence. Hi, Paul. And making sure that we look beyond ourselves and we take care of our own. That's the Vermont I want to live in and what guides me. Now, one of the things that we're looking at is housing. COVID showed us that one of the essential pieces to keeping our economy going, to growing Vermont, to just maintaining, is we need housing. And one of the things we're trying to do is make sure we open the pathways. I think there's rightly some concerns that the regulatory landscape has been a barrier to housing. And I mean housing at various levels, most especially for what we call the missing middle, workforce housing. We have a workforce shortage in Vermont, and one of the ways that we can address that is more housing. We want to keep young people here, we want to bring more people into Vermont, and the reality is we're going to need housing. And that connects to another piece that I want to talk about, and that's property taxes. The easiest way to bring our property taxes down is to grow the grand list. We add housing, we add businesses, that's going to bring taxes down. It's just something to think about, to start planting those seeds. In Vermont, we have a way of looking at housing, though, that's balanced with conservation. And years ago, Vermont was a leader in creating the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board, and that is the venue for funding to get funneled out to local, local community-based housing trusts. There's the regional housing trusts around Vermont, and conservation entities. And I'm looking right here. Mary Ellen has been essential in helping conserve that land along the West River, and it's essential that we do both. We're going to need housing to grow Vermont at all or to maintain it, but it's important that we make sure that we conserve land. Will Rogers once said, "Take care of the land you got because they ain't making no more." And it's, I think it's essential that we use the land we have and make sure there's open land or woodland for the next generation. So connected to that, there's a lot of talk about where our property taxes went in the last year. I know that people have mentioned how they've been going up for years. The first thing I want to say is that one of our guiding principles here is we want to make sure we provide a quality education for our kids. Our kids are the future. Our kids are going to be the ones taking our blood pressure in the next few years, and we want to make sure the kids of today can take our blood pressure accurately tomorrow. And I know there's a lot of concerns about the cost of that, and those are valid costs. When people feel their homes are being threatened by the costs of the property taxes, we have to pay attention to that. I'm especially talking to people that I've heard from who are retired on fixed income or disabled and on fixed income, they don't have any options. So we're going to be working hard this year. There's three things that we're focusing on this year. The first is we want to maintain, we don't want increases in our, in our property taxes this year. We want to maintain minimal increases within the rate of inflation. And to that end, we've already set aside $100 million in the budget to pay down tax rates, so we keep them at a minimum. Long term, though, there's going to be changes. Now, the governor has proposed changes that in essence blow up the current system. And I don't think we need to go that far. The governor had a mandate to lower property taxes. I don't think the mandate extended to blowing up the whole system. And I think some of his proposals are pretty far out of the realm, and what I'm hoping is that these are initial bargaining positions and that we'll be able to work and negotiate and get to a better place. Because his proposal right now completely takes away any sense of local control. His idea to create five statewide districts from the 119 we have now is a huge shift, and as I said, completely takes away local control. I'm not ready to go there. There's another piece of his plan that I absolutely don't want to go to, and that's expanding the voucher system. Expanding the voucher system would take even more resources away from our public schools at a time where they need the resources we can give them. So that's another piece, and we're going to make sure, as I said, we're going to fight to try and get the best deal that we can on this, but there is going to be change. And one of the ways there's going to be change is in governance and delivery. But there's also going to be a change in how we figure and value properties and then get to the taxes. And there's going to be a plan to more standardize how reappraisals, how valuations go. So we're all playing on the same, on a level playing field when it comes to how properties are valued. Then we know properties have gone up astronomically in the last five years. And just because a property gets raised in value, that doesn't mean the people living there have the means to pay exorbitantly higher taxes. We need to make sure there's a correlation between people's ability to pay and the level of taxation that they're, that they're assessed. So that's something we want to make sure we work on. What we want to make sure, though, is we don't lose sight of the reason we pay property taxes the way we do, and that's educating our kids. And my focus is on making sure our kids are getting that best education we can. And right now, there's a plan that would make us choose between lots of superintendents or cutting teachers. And what I'm going to state here is that if the choice is between cutting superintendents or cutting teachers, I'm sticking with the teachers. I want the people facing the children to still be there and ready to teach our children. There's a lot that's going to be happening. One of the more disappointing things is this is something the governor ran on, and we had anticipated he would have more than just headlines. And unfortunately, he didn't deliver his detailed plan to us till last week, eight weeks into the legislative session, eight weeks into an 18-week session. So some of these larger logistical things, we have to take our time with them. These are huge changes, and we can't just jump into them. So what we're looking at is to try and get things done on the first two pieces I mentioned, which is keeping the property taxes level and looking at how we value properties. The bigger things, we're anticipating maybe a three- to five-year rollout. And how that looks is going to depend, not just on me, but on you. I need to hear from you about what you think is the most effective and equitable way to move forward on this. So each month, I try and put out an opportunity for people to talk. I have a constituent Zoom room. I would be open to any, if the school wants to have meetings here in person, but we really want to hear from you. Legislators want to hear from you. I want to hear from you about how you think we should move forward on education reform. So stay tuned for more opportunities for that. Education is not the only thing that we've been working on, though. There are 25 committees in the House and Senate, and each one of them has a really important task. For example, the transportation committee is wrestling with the dilemma that we pay for road maintenance primarily through our DS tax, gas and diesel. However, those taxes are no longer creating enough income to maintain the roads and bridges at the rate that we should be. So what do we do? We're going to have to look for other ways to generate that income because I think our roads and bridges are as essential as it gets with once, how do we maintain our culture as it is? How do we maintain businesses as we are? So we're going to have to look at ways and look at what other states are doing because it's not just Vermont that's in that situation. Climate continues to be a short-term and a long-term problem. I know there's still some debates about whether climate is in fact not just a hoax, and there's some debates about what we can do and whether we should or not. And I just want to remind people that there is an entity that thoroughly believes in climate change, and that's your insurance companies. We're starting to see already that insurance companies are going to start raising their rates to pay for fires in California, to pay for flooding in Florida, to pay for flooding in Vermont. And your insurance companies are certainly watching what's happening with climate. And I think if there's any reason to move forward, that's a big one. And the reality is that there are companies in Florida and California that are just up and leaving. So what do you do without home insurance? You can't get a mortgage. So we're going to have to do something about that, and that's a big piece of that. And there's other pieces to do with climate. Last year, we passed a climate superfund bill. What this is going to do is require fossil fuel companies to pay for the damages, the floods, the fires. Right now in Vermont, for instance, Barry, Vermont, two years ago, they had floods in July. A year later, on the exact same day, they had floods again. People are seeing their insurance bills going way up there, and we're going to have to look at that. Who pays for those damages? There's a precedent that we set with tobacco companies, with drug companies, that they pay for the damage they've caused, and that's what the climate superfund bill does. It makes, takes the fossil fuel companies to task so Vermont taxpayers are not paying for the damage that their behaviors created. Vermont was the first state to do that, and of course, little old Vermont standing up against the fossil fuel companies is not going to be too effective. is not going to be too effective. New York State just passed the same law. California is looking at that law across the country. We're going to start seeing more states do that because taxpayers should not be covering, pay for the damages that fossil fuel companies. So stay tuned. What our hope is that we get enough companies to have a critical mass that with, like with the tobacco settlements, like with the Oxycontin, Oxycontin settlements, we can bring money back and hold them, take them to task for the damages that they, that they caused. The last thing I want to highlight is something that really was amplified in COVID, and that was the lack of childcare. The, the challenge to our childcare system is that it was expensive for parents. There wasn't enough of it because those who are early, early educators could go to McDonald's and make more than they do or getting paid to do childcare. So we passed a law last year that reforms that, which provides more money for parents, why two can get subsidy, and pays workers more and, and creates more slots. And it's working. Last year, we created 1,000 new slots for childcare. And what we were hearing and saw during COVID that if parents didn't have childcare, they couldn't go to work. Now, the other side of that, it, it's paid for with a payroll tax. That payroll tax is .044%. In my paycheck, it amounts to 82 cents a week. On a monthly basis, that's a little over $4, which is a cup of coffee from Dunkin' or wherever you go to get coffee if you go outside. And I'd say our kids are worth a cup of coffee a month. So. I know there was a lot of consternation that, that I voted for a payroll tax, which amounted to about 82 cents a week. And I think our kids are worth it, and we're showing that those investments are already paying off. So now other states began looking to Vermont for what we did because this is, this is a nationwide problem. And, and we want to make sure our kids get quality education at a cost they can afford, just like we want with our whole education system. I don't want to take too much more of your time, but I think we have time for any questions. Excellent.
Does anyone have a question for Mike? Yes, a friend.
Hi, Jody.
Hi, Mike. Jody Normandale. I want to live in Vermont, a Vermont where the people matter. And what they want matters, not what the people like you, and I'm not blaming you, but the legislation thinks that they know better than we do about our schools and about our kids, our communities and our education. We're in a building here that's a wonderful, wonderful school. It could be closed down in a few years if the governor has his way and the bills get changed. I personally don't, I, I personally want you and everybody else who represents us to fight. I don't want a deal made up in legislature, up in the Montpelier. I want to be able to have our say down here. Before Act 46, everything was just ducky for Dummerston. I don't believe it's the same anymore. They don't know more than we do. So I want you to put on your black jacket or whatever you have to do, and everybody else, and fight for us down here. I mean, they don't even know we exist, first of all. Their listen and learn thing that they came down here did nothing. They didn't take anything back that we said. In the group I was in, I don't know how many pages we had on the wall for them to take back. None of that was reported. The AOE is just as bad. They're all, it's all administration. So please, I want you to fight for us. Thank you.
You're spot on, Jody. And, and I'm going to disagree with you one thing. They do know you up there. Yeah. I was just, at breakfast the other morning, I was talking to Senator Scott Beck. And I was, Scott Beck, he's a Republican, but he's a good guy. He's an educator. And I said, I was talking to a constituent, and he said, wait a minute. It was Jody, wasn't it? And, and we are going to fight. I was just talking to your principal this morning when I came by earlier. And she said, you know, we're just starting to get settled in from the changes that happened in consolidation. And now you're going to ask us to change some more. And I said, well, not me. I mean, I, I am going to fight. The political calculus though was set in November. Governor Scott won an overwhelming majority. I think he's pushing what his mandate was beyond what people wanted though. I hope he's ready to negotiate. And that's what I mean when I say we're going to try and get the best deal because we can't overturn any more of his vetoes. He gets the last word. And unless he agrees with something now, we're going to have to make, and try and get as good a deal as we can. And that's what I'm going to fight for. Because I see, I see how lively the school is, the amazing staff you have, the principal who's just as vibrant as anybody here. This school is alive, and that's what we want for our kids, and that's what I want to keep fighting for. So I will take your words to heart, Jody. Just remind you, you are well-known around the state.
Any other questions for Mike? In the back? Phoebe, you want to run to the back? Raise your hand again, please. Thank you.
Richard Epstein. Just a quick, I appreciate what you said about housing and about conservation. And I know that that is going to be a tricky thing, but just a suggestion, you probably already know this, but cluster developments if housing is done in a more open area. And more importantly, housing in already existing towns and urban settings. That's good for the vitalization of a town, and it does then allow for open land to stay open.
Thanks, Richard. I hope you're doing well. We have to do both. And it's one of the, one of the things Vermont, again, is a leader on, is balancing housing and conservation. And, and I know with, with all the conservation work that's gone on here in Dummerston, it's, it's an important thing. And the idea of how we do housing is important too, not just that we do it, but how we do it. So thanks.
Any other questions for Mike? Yes.
Hi, Mike. Bill Conley. I feel the same way as Jody. I wish my name were as well-known in Montpelier as hers. But you and I have been talking about the governor's education plan. And you mentioned Senator Baker?
Scott Beck.
Scott Beck, okay. So my question is, can we who care very much about education, instead of talking to you, I'll continue to talk to you, but can we talk to other, should we be talking to other members of the Education Committee in the Senate, for example? Should we be reaching out to other legislators that might have similar views? And if not, can we convince them that this plan by the governor is a disaster so that we can have more influence? So that's my question.
And I appreciate that. And I think Senator Hashim may be here later, and he is on the Senate Education Committee. I think it's really important to let the governor know. I think they're challenged a little bit because they're not getting the open-armed reception that they thought this plan would. And as I said, I think the, the last straw was their idea to expand the voucher system. That just doesn't sound like what we want to do in Vermont. It's important to, to be in touch, and I can certainly bring your voices to Montpelier, but I think it's really important to let the governor know. I mean, I think if he doesn't hear from you, the assumption is that things are fine. So whether it's on climate, which, which the governor is backtracking on also. I mean, he's got some, a plan out there which really puts the brakes on any climate action. And with what's happening in Washington, where they're trying to completely shut down any climate actions, I think it's especially important for Vermont to, to stay before us and not backtrack. So I think whether it's education, climate, we, we need to let, let the governor know.
Thank you, Mike. Time for our lunch count. If you plan on participating in the Grange Lunch that will be offered, $8 for adults, $4 for kids, please raise your hand so Larry has an idea of how many sandwiches to make. Keep your hand up for a moment. He's counting. He's still counting. He's not even halfway done because so many of you know that it's going to be good food. He's still counting. And he's all set. Thanks very much. We are ready for Article 7. Shall the voters approve total general fund expenditures of $662,890, of which $526,798 shall be raised by taxes and $136,092 by non-tax revenues for the period of July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2026? I'm going to add one more thing before Todd makes his motion, and that is that I ask that any motions to amend this budget be held until Todd completes his review of the budget.
All right. I move that we approve total general fund expenditures of $662,890, of which $526,798 shall be raised by taxes and $136,092 by non-tax revenues for the period of July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2026.
Alex seconds. It has been moved and seconded to approve total general fund expenditures of $662,890, of which $526,798 shall be raised by taxes and $136,092 by non-tax revenues for the period of July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2026.
Thanks. So the general fund starts on page 26 of your town report if you have it. It runs through page 29, so it's four total pages. It's broken up by various categories that you can read through. The general fund numbers increased by about 13.2% this year from last year for taxes. The total is about $77,471 increase. The main drivers of those increases, we spoke with the, worked with the volunteer fire department this year and decided as a board that we were going to fund their entire operating expenses as opposed to what's been done in the past, which was they gave us their operating expenses, they subtracted the fundraising that they would have in a given year, and we essentially fund the difference of those two things. We decided that having a fire department that's relying on fundraising along with everything else they do, including bringing out fires, training, you name it, whatever they have to do, and it's a lot, that we would rather have the operating expenses covered, take the fundraising dollars and use those to offset capital needs where they need to buy new equipment, jackets, helmets, oxygen kits, things like that. And so the increase that you see in here is not an increase in the operating expenses of the fire department, it's an increase in our commitment to the operating expenses of the fire department. The actual increase in operating expenses was essentially the rate of inflation. So I just want to make sure that it's clear that it's not a, suddenly they're buying loads and loads of printer paper and having pizza parties. So that's one of the driving forces. Also, there's an increase in their capital funds. We've got a five-year plan with them, just like we did with the capital fund. What do they need over the next five years for to put out fires and protect all of us? And we've broken that down by a, a set amount every five years, every year for the next five years to make sure that they can purchase the gear they need. One of the caveats is fundraising, additional fundraising beyond a set number would reduce the future year capital fund requirement. So if we were going to fund them for $30,000 next year, if they raised $15,000 more than planned in fundraising, that $15,000 would come off next year's capital budget. So fundraising now is based on building a larger auxiliary, which Paul Adler is going to be working on with the fire department, to get more people to help out fundraising efforts with the fire department so that there's more time for them to do what they need to do and less time doing fundraisers. So those two line items for the fire department are a driving force. The library is an increase of $8,022. Between the three things, the two fire department lines and the fire department, that pretty much makes up the entire increase to the general fund. There's payroll increases that went along with the Social Security Administration adjustment, 2.6% across the board and associated taxes. Those are also in there. But the prime drivers of those two items that I just covered. So yeah, $78,000. That, that pretty much covers the, the main changers in the general fund from last year to this year.
Are there questions for Todd?
Paul Normandale again. I'm looking on page 46 for the volunteer fire department operating budget. I notice it has three years' worth of budgets, but no actuels. And I'm wondering how, how the actuels line up with the budget and why aren't there any actuels in here if we're supposed to make a decision on how the fire departments operate?
So I'll answer from our side. We have seen the actuels up through the point that we're just doing the budget work. The fire department does have their actuels, and if they want to address that a little bit. Fire department, grab a mic there, look at it.
Hello, my, Dan Riddlehoover, the fire department. We, we do have the actuels. I'm sorry, I'm not standing in front of them immediately, but I did set up all of our financials in the hallway outside by the office of the principal's office. So you can review them there. The, one of the challenges we have is the misalignment of our fiscal year budget as we establish it with the fire department with the date of with which we receive funding commitments from the town. There's a significant lag time between when the town votes to contribute some amount versus when the fire department sets its final budget in October for the following fiscal year that doesn't begin until July. So there's quite some sort of drag between when we find out how much money we get from the town and when we set our budgets. The actuels look basically exactly like 2024's approved. We had a surplus of approximately $2,000. It's a little bit noisy in the way that we would do our sort of accounting in the past where fundraising would cover our operating expenses because fundraising comes and goes. Occasionally, we would receive large one-off gifts from estates or donors or things like that, and we would accrue a surplus in our budgets. Occasionally, we would operate at a deficit. And so what we've worked with the town on is to provide operating expenses and have those up and down surpluses and shortages from fundraising impact our capital funding instead of our operating expenses. So short answer, our actuels are very similar to what the FY 2024 numbers are as printed in the, in the book here.
Thank you, Dan. I'll point out that that was a neutral factual answer and so doesn't count as a term speaking in case Dan wants to address in a more passionate way this issue. Any other questions about the budget? Are you ready? That would be part of now, yes, Catherine.
Hello, my name is Catherine O'Callaghan. And I move that we amend the budget to add $12,000 and use it to increase the allocation for the Lydia Taft Pratt Library.
Your motion is to amend the budget to add $12,000 to the Lydia Taft Pratt Library budget. All right. Is there anyone who would like to, it has been seconded, thank you, your name? Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this? Can we have a microphone for Lyle?
Lyle Holiday. So over the past few years, the Lydia Taft Pratt has had a goal to expand the library. I already said it, but I'll say it again, Lyle Holiday.
Lyle, would you like to tell us why you're speaking to this?
Sure, I am one of the trustees for the Lydia Taft Pratt Library. So I'll begin again. The library has had the goal to expand and expand in many ways. One of the ways is to have more open hours, more time for our youngest children, and to expand also so that we could increase the space of the current library. The library had the opportunity to apply for a grant through Building Bright Futures. Building Bright Futures really focuses on our youngest, zero through age eight, children and families. And through the good graces of Building Bright Futures, we acquired that grant and we've been able to, through working with the Dunbarston Community Center, rent more space and half-room across the hall. So we've been able to move all of the children's programming into a new space, which is great for everyone because now we've been able to expand the existing library so people can move around the stacks. There's room now in the existing library for meeting space so people can sit and do research or read, and there's a space specifically for our youngest children. The grant, however, goes from January, current January 2025, through September. And the grant pays for the rent, pays for children's librarian, pays for children's materials. However, the $12,000 in the motion would allow us to continue this program from the end of September through June 30 of 2026.
Thank you. Any other questions on the motion on the floor? In the back? In the wayback? Will you raise your hand again, so there you go.
Hi, Christine Gep. My question for the library is the grant that you all applied for has a limited span of time. You just explained that it would cover an expanded service and that the town will pick up after that, and that's what you're asking for today. My question is, is this something that, in essence, it's a match of at least the value of the grant over the next five years, as I understand it? The articles that I've read in the Informer, in the Reformer and on social media don't really emphasize this matching component and it makes me a little bit uncomfortable wondering whether the acceptance of the grant sort of bound the town to carry on with funding the expansion as opposed to this all having been discussed before the grant was applied for or the grant was received? I, I guess my question is, is that something, was that something that you guys procedurally intended that the grant would be accepted, the expansion, which looks great? And I've seen pictures and books are wonderful and children are wonderful, and I'm not saying any of them aren't. This is really a procedural question about how we got to the point where the town is being asked in 2025, in March, for money that was basically committed to sometime last summer.
Who would like to answer that, Lyle?
The beginning part of this grant is a time for us to collect data to see how the program is doing, if we are actually attracting more children and people to the library. If the town disagrees and doesn't want to pursue this through 2026, then the program ends in September and the children's things that have been purchased all move back into the main library and that's the end of it. There is no commitment unless this body determines that it is a worthwhile thing for us to continue through 2026.
Lyle, I think part of the question was also going forward beyond the budget year we're voting on this year. Can you or someone else answer the question as to how much money would be needed to carry this program forward?
My name is Linda DiCarlo Burns, I'm a trustee also. So basically, the investment carrying forward in the library is really an investment in the expansion of the library. Yes, the grant enabled us to take advantage of this and move forward with our plans, but we had always wanted to expand. So the timing of what happened procedurally is that we applied for the grant in September and libraries had never been awarded this grant before. So we didn't, we weren't 100% confident that we were going to get the grant. However, thankfully, Building Bright Futures did believe in what our vision was and they awarded the grant to us. However, even without that grant, we knew that the library had to be expanded. The current space simply was not functional for any resident here in Dunbarston to make use of an actual library. There was no real room to look at the books, there was no meeting space, there was no place to sit down. And so we knew going forward that we were going to ask to increase the budget for the expansion. The grant made it possible to provide you with a proof of concept because we were able to take advantage of it now and then see how it would play out in the future. So I'm saying that yes, roughly $12,000 a year for the next five years will be our investment, but the investment is in the library as a whole, not just in the children's programming.
I'm calling on Todd.
So I just want to correct a few numbers there. The select board looked at this, looked at the budget they asked for, which was $42,000. And we decided to cut back those nine months of rent and system librarian that were required for the town to cover. So that's what the $12,000 they're asking for is. The difference between what the library budget would be now in the next five years if we do the expansion and take over the grant is $80,000 over five years. It's an extra $16,000 a year because we're covering all 12 months of the rent, all 12 months of system librarian. So the grant's for $60,000. Unless we want to unwind the entire thing in nine months and cram all the books back in, what the ask is, is are we committed to $80,000 more over the next five years than what would be now? And that's on top of the grant. So the $12,000 this year is a 1% increase in the municipal tax rate, plus the assumption that there's a future commitment, money-wise, to keep going.
I will clarify that we are not being asked to vote on future years. And I recall Lyle saying that data would be collected so that the body has something to look at for future years. I see Beverly's hand. Beverly, here.
I have several things to say. First of all, I want to understand how it is different for the fire department to be in control of their capital fund as opposed to how the town being in control of that capital fund works. I'm not talking about how it's financed, I'm talking about how it's used. So I want that question answered before I vote on the line items. The second thing is referring to the library. And I'm kind of upset that we're not dealing with these both separately, but we're dealing with them all as part of this line item. I feel very angry that the library got a grant and made us responsible for the extra money without asking us. That's extremely inappropriate. If they want our money, they need to ask for it before they take action. Secondly, I have been involved with that library. I was a volunteer librarian 40 years ago. And we were in a small little room in a green room. And they wanted to expand the library so more people would use it. And that's when they moved over to the community center. I walk the street of Dunbarston every day for my exercise, three hours that the library is open. And there is always only one cop there. I can count on one hand how many times there have been more than one cop there. And I feel like they are asking for money for infrastructure and employing salaries, wages, but there are no clients that go there. And it, to me, they need to take responsibility for how many people show up there. They need to do something to bring more people in. They need to grow what they have with clientele before they ask us for more.
Beverly, you had a question in the beginning that you said you wanted answered, and I think it was...
It refers back to the fire department. And what's the difference in the town being in control of the fire department's capital fund as opposed to the fire department being in control of the capital fund?
Okay, I'm going to ask you to hold that because the discussion right now is on the motion to increase the budget for the benefit of the library. Can you put the mic in front of your, yeah, thanks?
We moved on from the fire department. We were discussing that, but we moved on.
And once we vote on this motion, we'll be back to the main motion and that question can come up again, as well as questions about any other part of the general fund.
Okay.
All right. Yes, in the back. Benjamin, do you see in the back?
Hi, I'm Kestrel. I don't have a ton to say, but I just wanted to address the piece you said about, two pieces actually. The, first of all, the amount of people going to the library. I grew up in Dunbarston, have been, lived here my whole life. I went to the library very frequently and relied on it as a resource. Also during the pandemic, when we were having internet challenges, it was extremely vital for me to continue my college education, which I do online because I was able to use the library's Wi-Fi, which is a very important resource. I just wanted to speak on the wanting the library to bring in more patrons. So I see the expansion and the new side of the library and them having more space as an incentive to do that. I think that that's going to be, that's going to bring more people in simply because there's more space for more people. And I think that, yeah, I think that's, that's, that is a step in that direction. And that our library is very important and we should support their many programs, which they have more programs now than they used to. They have book clubs and cookbook clubs. And I just really want to support the library and I think that this grant is wonderful and that we should continue to put our funds towards keeping our public libraries open and accessible to everyone.
I saw Jody's hand in the front room.
Jody.
It's on, Jody.
Oh, Jody Normandale.
Hold it up in front of your mouth and then we'll hear.
First of all, I'm, I love libraries. Second of all, I think there's a big difference between what we want and what we need. And I am really afraid of the expansion of this library. And I'm afraid of it because I've heard throughout from the people involved in the library that this isn't where they want to stop, that they, they want the big room, they want more. And I think that's where it's going, they want more and more and more. And I think we as a town have to make the decision as to where they're, where we spend our money. We need our roads taken care of. I don't think, living where we do, where we have a beautiful Putney library that's got a great kids program, we have a big, beautiful Brattleboro library, which was a huge floor of kids programs going on. I think one of the select board members made a point at one point, you know, why don't we talk to Putney or talk to Brattleboro and see if they would allow us, you know, give them a certain amount of money and see if they would allow people to use one of their libraries? And I know several people use, that I've talked to, using all of them. So I guess the other thing that's bothering me is the fact that somebody else spoke to right now, is the fact that this was done and I don't think the select board knew that a grant was being filed for, that they would have to pick up the other nine months of the cost. And, and I've just heard just now that it may be a five-year program. I don't know what's going on. But I do think as a town, we have to decide where we want to go, whether we want to expand the library or whether we can take advantage of one of the two other ones that are close by. And so I would, you know, people to consider that when they take this vote. The select board already said that they didn't want to give them more money when they cut them back from the original one. But I'm a little bit concerned and I think it may be, it may be not the library board that's doing the things that bother me, but I think things are being proposed and that we maybe don't want to take advantage of. Thank you.
PBS, I have a hand in the wayback, see them in the green section?
Hello, my name is Andrew Morrison. And I'm geographically located in Dunbarston in a way that my family does utilize the Putney Town Library and pay for our ability to use that. And I bring that up only because I don't actually have any personal experience with the Lydia Taft Library. I had to look it up where they were located moments ago for this conversation. So I want to start there. But I want to add to this that I imagine for the grant that was received, there were likely some type of deliverance. there were likely some type of deliverable, some sort of tracking of how participation with your library may have changed due to the changes you made. You introduced this as an opportunity to have a realistic pilot of your desires. And so I'm wondering if you could speak to any tracking you might have done. How did this change foot traffic? Because I don't have any personal experience to sort of inform that part of this decision. Thank you.
Sure, Lyle, you have answered that question?
We have just started collecting the data. We received the grant in January. The room officially opened on Saturday, this past Saturday. So we do not have data as how it has increased as of yet.
Thank you. And right next to, oh, no, I'm sorry. There was a woman I had handed earlier, yes.
Hi, I'm Julie Johnson. And I am a fairly new resident of Demerstoun. And I love Demerstoun so much. But I was appalled that the library was as tiny as it is. I mean, there's not enough room, as my grandma used to say, to swing a cat in that library. So it's very difficult for more than a few people to be in there. And so it's going to be great to have more space. Certainly, the lack of space is one of the things that holds me back because it's just difficult if there's anybody else in there. And there has always been someone else in there when I've been there to move around, even to see the books. So I think it's great. And I think that a town as wonderful as Demerstoun deserves to have a decent library. And that involves more space. I'd also like to point out that the types of materials that libraries are expected to carry has changed quite a bit in the last 40 years. So it's not just books now. It's also audiovisual materials and DVDs and CDs and things like that. So, and all of those do take up shelf space. Again, having the internet access is really essential in a town like Demerstoun with all of its beautiful hills that interfere with the signal. So, and I don't like the idea that this is some kind of power grab that was, that there's a cabal behind that is trying to take over more space and demand more money. And that was my other point too, which the gentleman back there pointed out, is that, yes, people can go to Brattleboro and they can go to Putney, but it costs far more money a year than would be represented by the rise in taxes. So, you know, we're talking about, what is it now? It's like, you know, $5 or $10 a year maybe for each, out of each individual's taxes to support the library. And we're just, it's just being asked to like maybe raise that to, you know, 15 or 18. So that's not very much money. So, and it would be just fantastic to have a decent library that the town could be proud of. Thanks.
Commandant Yonchur, please.
Hi, I'm Gavi Kessler. I also don't live near the Lydia Taft Library and I use other libraries. But that being said, I hear that a grant was accepted for a program that sounds like an exciting trial to try something new. It sounds like more money is needed to keep it running. And they asked the select board. The select board didn't think that was a great idea. And they're coming to us in good faith, asking us whether we want to continue the program. And I think it's important that we don't demonize the hard work of volunteers who are trying to bring us a new program. And it's up to us whether we want to continue it or not. That being said, I hear a lot of people talking about education and the importance of education and wanting to fight against Phil Scott and fight for our education. Here is a concrete thing that we can do for children and for education. It's something that we can do. And although it's not a library that I use, I am happy to give whatever small amount of money needs to go to continue funding this program so small children have a room to read.
I'm in the back, Suzanne Haryan.
Hi, Suzanne Weinberg. I'm hoping to bring together a few things that people have said. There've been a lot of good points made. And just, I'm wondering, I may have missed this, but I think we're voting on just one year of the funding. Is that, I want to know if that's correct. If it's for one year going ahead, which I think it is.
Yes.
I'm hoping that somebody who really has good experience with data collection and making surveys and really collecting pertinent data can supervise the gathering of the data. Because I know from being on various boards, it's hard to design a questionnaire and really gather the right data. And so then next year, we'd have a better chance of having an informed discussion about whether we wanted to continue for the next four years. So that's one, I don't know if that's a condition that would be added into the approval, but that's what I would love to see. And the second thing is we've tossed around, it's a little bit of money per year. And last week at the informational meeting, somebody said it was $22 a year per, but I didn't get whether it was per voter or per child or per resident or per household. And so if somebody's done that math, I think that would really help people make a decision about whether they wanted to make the investment.
As I recall, it was $22 per person, per resident in Demerstoun. Yes, I'm getting an honor from Lydia, thank you.
So Madam Madam, does that mean a household of five? It would be five times 22, even with the children counted in?
Yes.
Okay.
Geraldine down front.
Hi, I'm Geraldine Wilson. I live up on Leonard Road. And I'm looking at this from looking into the past and also looking into the future. In my 40-plus years in Demerstoun, I remember the community center as the K-12 school that kids on my road walk down to the school. And my disappointment in Demerstoun is that there hasn't been a place to just run into people, a place to gather. And so I'm looking at this library expansion as an opportunity to also expand a place for people in Demerstoun to gather. I do have questions about the program itself. And I'm really looking forward to the data that's going to be collected. So I'll be looking at that really carefully. But I am really excited by the open house that happened this past Saturday and what the community center and library is becoming. And in looking in the future, hoping that the library and the community center can almost become one. So really looking ahead and seeing this as a push to something that is quite exciting to me.
We look over here. Yes, Beverly? Thank you for standing, Beverly. This is easier for the white runners.
My name is, my name is Billy Slade. And I have to admit that I don't use the library very much. Part of that is because it is such a small library and limited in its scope. However, I do work with children. And that's why I'm sitting in this space with all of these children. I run one of the two licensed childcare programs here in Demerstoun. And I can tell you that the level of excitement when it's Thursday afternoon and it's story hour for these kids is through the roof. They leave my program and go to hear stories. This last Saturday, the excitement was very, very high about the Dino Man coming. And I think that the idea that you have to have a clientele before you create something is backwards. I think the fact that we have all of these children, we want Demerstoun to be strong and the future to be strong, to be attracting young families. We have people who did the work. They applied for this grant. I also got one of these grants. And it's a huge amount of work to get those BDF grants. So to be able to give them a chance to show that this is something that people want. And I can guarantee you from my perspective, talking with these young families, people want this.
Thank you. The woman standing over there, Beverly?
Hi, everyone. My name is Jessica Everlyth. I just wanted to share a couple stories, personal stories of using the library and how I was, thought it was interesting. Someone said they never see any cars there. The two events I've been to at the library have been so packed that I've been parking in a snowbank to be there. And one of them was over the weekend with my kids at the open house. And another one was a couple of years ago when there was a sourdough baking class. And I went with my husband and we learned about making sourdough. And we happened to be on financial hard times in that time. And we've used that sourdough starter. We still have it. We still make about a loaf a week. We feed it to our neighbors. We feed it when we need it, when we can't necessarily buy bread at the store. And so it's been a saver for us. And that's just one example of how the library's been there for us. And we're excited to have more hours there and a dedicated children's space. So I'll be voting in support of this amendment tonight, today.
Alex up front?
Alex Wilson. I just wanted to clarify that the select board decided not to put the full budget request into the general fund budget because we felt it was appropriate for the town to have a discussion. It wasn't that the full select board opposed this measure, but when, as a tradition, when a new expenditure comes up with the town, the select board likes the town to be able to talk about it. And that's what we're doing here.
Catherine, up front here, Benjamin?
Thanks, Benjamin. Catherine Callahan again. And I want to speak to encourage you to vote yes on this. Lydia Taft Pratt Library was founded over 100 years ago by a woman named Lydia Taft Pratt. She was a local school teacher, I believe, in Greenfield. However, she had a vision of having a library in Demerstoun. And that's what we have. And we're at a moment now where there's another vision coming up. Let's make it better. Let's serve the community. Let's have space where we can actually gather. This is an exciting moment. I'm part of Lydia's friends. I'm a member of that group, have been for a while. But now we are incorporated. That's our Friends of the Library. And last year, our Geranium Festival did very well so that we funded museum passes, which all the other libraries in the area have. And now we have them here in Demerstoun. This year, we are bringing a speaker on March 18th, Tuesday, March 18th, 7:00 PM. Meg Mott, she's called the Constitutional Wrangler. She is speaking on floods, science, and democracy in Vermont. Because we're incorporated, because the community center is letting us use the bigger room for that event and collaborating with us, we are going to make something greater. This is a vision. And it's time for us to, in the memory of Lydia Taft Pratt, move forward. Thank you.
Bill Holiday, elected for the first time as a select board member in 2011. And this discussion brings an appreciation for what everybody has said. There are valid points made by all people. But I want you to know that I have heard, in essence, nothing new from back in my time, 15 years ago, as a select board member, when the same issue and some kind of a request for funds had come up. And the larger issue is ultimately, does this town want its own library or not? It's as simple as that. And if it wants it, it needs to fund it. Maybe it should be on the ballot in another year where people of the town of Demerstoun who choose to vote can decide, yes, we want a library of our own, or no, we don't. And I'm glad you just gave the history that goes back 100 years. It's not like this library has like some stump come up out of the ground and appeared before the people of Demerstoun.
Who's about here?
I'm Molly Stoner-Villen, and I hear something new. Because what I've been wanting to say, a lot of people have said what I was thinking as well. But I wanted to add also that I rarely step foot in the library, but I use it every day. And so I want people to know about the Libby app, which you can get on your phone using your library, your Lydia Taft Pratt number, and listen to books, read books every day. So I use the library every day. I would love to amplify the voices that are asking for giving it a year, charging the library with presenting data. Personally, I'd love to see data on usage of the library, but also on collaboration with the community center because I think that's a vital part of the organization and the potential moving forward. And may I be so bold as to call the question out there?
Molly is calling the question. I don't recall seeing other hands before hers. I'm sorry. So we, is there, is there someone else who wants to second that motion? Second the motion to call the question, or is that... There is a second needed. And then a two-thirds majority needs to agree to call the question. Is there anyone who would like to second the motion to call the question? I hear seconds, I see raised hands. So now I'm going to ask you to raise your hand to indicate, yes, you agree to end debate, or no, you would like to continue debate. All those in favor of ending debate and voting on the motion to amend the budget, raise your hand. Okay. Hands down, everyone who would like to continue debating, please raise your hands. All right, I think we have a two-thirds majority saying that they're comfortable calling the question. So the question is called. The motion on the floor is to amend the general fund budget by adding $12,000 to the Lydia Taft Pratt library budget for this fiscal year. Yes, Beverly? You'd like a paper ballot on adding this money to the budget on the motion on the floor? Okay, then I'll ask the Board of Civil Authority to come forward and we'll line up. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, yes. Okay. For a paper ballot, we need seven people who agree with Beverly that a paper ballot is warranted. If you would like a paper ballot, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. Okay, we have more than seven, so it's, thank you, Lori. So if your last name begins... How about over there, since left to right? If your last name begins with A through L, please line up in front of this table. M through Z, line up in front of this table. And you will deposit your ballot here at this table. Please be seated. The meeting is resumed. The count is ready. And I want to thank Dion Bailey for loading me this tool in here. In the question of amending the general fund budget to add $12,000 to the Lydia Taft Pratt library budget, yeses were 112, nos were 32. The $12,000 has been added to the budget. We now return to the amended articles... budget. We now return to the amended Article VII, which now should read that we approve total fund expenditures of $6,74,890. Chris, does that sound right? The new total is, with $12,000 added, is $674,890, of which $538,798 would be raised by taxes. Anybody think I've got that wrong? Okay. Sure. The motion on the floor now is that we approve total general fund expenditures of $674,890, of which $538,798 shall be raised by taxes, and $136,092 by non-tax revenues for the period of July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026. Are there further questions on the main motion on the floor? Beverly, thank you. Thank you, Dawson.
I would like to know, what's the difference in having the fire department's capital fund included in the town budget as opposed to managing their own capital fund? How does that affect our taxes? Or how does that affect how much money is spent, how much money is put out?
The Select Board is interrogating. Todd?
That's an excellent question. This one doesn't as good as that one.
It's fine.
The, we talked about this two years ago for the last budget, of incorporating their capital fund into our capital fund, so that it would just be one line item. The difference between the two is, our capital fund is managed by the town because it's money that's sitting in town coffers. The fire department is its own entity as a, are you guys, where are they at? You guys are nonprofit. So they're a nonprofit. So that, so to answer your question, what would be the difference in tax dollars? It wouldn't be any difference. We could put it in our capital fund, and it'd still be the same amount of money that they want or need to purchase equipment.
Thank you. Terry?
So I did, I'm just Teresa Chapman. I've got a follow-up to that, because to my understanding, being on the past board, there is a slight difference. Because when you put it in the general fund, it gets paid out to the entity twice a year after the taxes are collected. And so therefore, if they decided to only use 20,000 of the 40,000, or whatever they're asking, they just keep the 20,000 in their coffers. Had it been in our, the town's capital fund, if they only used 20 of the 40, they have to show the treasurer the invoices. And then the 20 that isn't spent has to stay in the capital fund in, for a reserve for the next year. Am I correct on that?
You are.
Okay. So to answer Bev's question, if we're giving them, this is a good discussion for the town, is do we want the fire department to keep the money without having to show invoices to actually what they're spending? Because I do have a hard time with not showing the actuals under FYI 24, because a lot of data comes in at the end of June of '24. So there is no reason why, as you had to wait till now in the back room to show us the actuals.
Are there any other questions on the motion on the floor? It has been moved and seconded to approve a total general fund expenditures of $674,890, of which $538,798 shall be raised by taxes, and $136,92 by non-tax revenues for the period of July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and you have passed your general fund budget. I want to remind you of the Adopt a Book program in the library, and also tell you that the fire department is conducting a straw poll on a name change. And they encourage everyone to go out in the hall and check it out, and let your opinion be known. Thank you. And if there is no objection, we will recess from lunch, reconvening the meeting at 1:05 PM. Thank you. We are up to Article 8. The article reads, shall the voters approve total highway fund expenditures of $707,509, of which $534,854 shall be raised by taxes, and $172,655 by non-tax revenues for the period of July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2026?
I move that we approve total highway fund expenditures of $707,509, of which $534,854 shall be raised by taxes, and $172,655 by non-tax revenues for the period of July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026.
Is there a second? Second from the Select Board. Thank you. You want to present it?
Sure.
All right.
Page 23 in your books. I know everybody's dying to go there. So the highway fund is, proposed budget is in there. It's actually decreasing by 2% this year from last year. We have some savings. We're planning less money on diesel fuel, thanks to the efforts of somebody whose name sounds like Paul Normandot. The increases for the wages are in there the same as it is for everybody else, 2.5, 6% or whatever it is this year. But we're able to save money in some other areas. So the highway fund's actually decreasing by about 2%.
Are there any questions for Todd on the highway fund? Seeing no hands, it has been moved and seconded that we approve total highway fund expenditures of $707,509, of which $534,854 shall be raised by taxes, and $172,655 by non-tax revenues for the period of July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2026. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and you have funded your highway department. Any legislators? No. So we move to Article 9. Shall the voters authorize raising the sum of $28,283 through taxes and appropriate set amount to the highway blasting and ledge-crushing reserve fund for future blasting and crushing?
I move that we raise the sum of $28,283 through taxes and appropriate set amount to the highway blasting and ledge-crushing reserve fund for future blasting and crushing.
Is there a second? Second from Paul. It has been moved and seconded to raise the sum of $28,283 through taxes and appropriate set amount to the highway blasting and ledge-crushing reserve fund for future blasting and crushing. Any questions? Paul?
Hi. Oh, no, no, no. When is the blasting supposed to take place? How much money do we have, what do we have in the reserve fund, and will it cover, cover the cost of the blasting?
I'd like to ask Lee to respond to that.
Lee is interrogated. Paul, can you hand the microphone to Lee?
The chairman is rejected. He won last, this year. So the town of Dummerston put in the same amount of money, with the same amount of material blasted. So this year, I'm not sure what the poll is, but everything happened.
On page 14, you can see some numbers about this fund. Any other questions? All right. You are ready for the question. It has been moved and seconded to raise the sum of $28,283 through taxes and appropriate set amount to the highway blasting and ledge-crushing reserve fund for future blasting and crushing. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. Blast and crush away, Lee. Sounds good. Article 10, shall the voters authorize highway structure expenditures of $25,000 and to pay for set expenditures from the Highway Structures Fund?
I move that voters authorize highway structures expenditures of $25,000 and pay for set expenditures from the Highway Structures Fund.
Is there a second?
Sir?
It has been moved and seconded that we authorize highway structure expenditures of $25,000 and to pay for set expenditures from the Highway Structures Fund. Are there questions? Paul?
Hi. Me, Lee. Questioning about this is, this is, this item does not appear to be on page 22, with the impact of taxes. And I'm wondering if the board has calculated the new impact on taxes. I can help.
But can I know how this is money that's already been raised, money that's already been taxed and spent?
No, the $25,000. So you're not looking to increase taxes by this $25,000? Thank you very much.
This motion is only an expenditure, not an authorization to raise. Okay. Any further questions? The motion on the floor is that we authorize highway structure expenditures of $25,000 and to pay for set expenditures from the Highway Structures Fund. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? No. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. Article 11, shall the voters grant tax-exempt status to the Evening Star Grange for a period of one year pursuant to the provisions of Title 32, Section 3840?
I move voters grant tax-exempt status to the Evening Star Grange for a period of one year pursuant to the provisions of Title 32, Section 3840.
Paul seconds it. Thank you. Is Mark Davis? No, wrong one. Mark Brown. But we're on the Evening Star Grange. So that's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions about this? All right. It has been moved and seconded that we grant tax-exempt status to the Evening Star Grange for a period of one year pursuant to the provisions of Title 32, Section 3840. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. Article 12, shall the voters grant tax-exempt status to Green Mountain Camp for a period of one year pursuant to the provisions of Title 32, Section 3840? Is this is what I want to ask? Oh, Billy! We have a microphone there.
I get to speak finally now. I'm the director of Green Mountain Camp, and I'm a voting member of Dummerston community.
So say your name.
I'm Lily Slade, and I've been a volunteer as the director of the camp for the past 12 years, and then retired. And I am thrilled to introduce you to Victor Senni, who is our new director, longtime friend of the camp, and from Rattler, who is going to do wonderful jobs on Greenback the match. And so we're really excited to have you here. And you know that Dummerston...
Billy, it's time. Got to interrupt you right now. I'm looking for someone to make a motion.
All right, I will. I make a motion that the voters grant tax-exempt status to Green Mountain Camp for a period of one year pursuant to the provisions of Title 32, Section 3840.
Thank you. Is there a second? Multiple seconds. Very good. And would you like to speak a little more, Billy, about this?
Just that, just that we so appreciate the support of this community over the last 107 years. And we know that it makes a big difference in children's lives, and we hope to be able to continue to do that for many years to come.
Any questions on this motion? The motion has been made and seconded that we grant tax-exempt status to Green Mountain Camp for a period of one year pursuant to the provisions of Title 32, Section 3840. Are you ready for the question? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. Article 13, other business. Couple of people have told me they have things they want to say. We need a microphone back there.
This is Megan Ayler. I am the Dummerston representative to the Independent Budget Review Committee, which is a committee that's comprised of a member of each of the forming towns to the school district. So there is one member from Rattler, one member from Yolfer, one member from Putney, and I, who have represented in Dummerston since it was founded four years ago. The task of this group is to review the currently 150-page school budget and condense it into 16 pages that are in readable format, and hopefully with some cool charts and graphs in color. That will be available in the coming week. It will be on the school, school board website. It will be on LinkedIn, Facebook, on social media. And Michelle Green, this is a request, formal request, to push that out there so that people can try to understand a very complex, very large budget, and understand what it means for our school. The reason we created this committee, it was created by the electorate four years ago, was that all school board members are tasked with representing all the students in the WSESD. So we have two fabulous Dummerston resident representatives, Director Stanford, Jessica Everly, goes here early. I think she's in lack of the children. But their task was representing all the students, and they do a fabulous job. The committee is tasked with looking at how taxes affect the individual towns, and how it affects the individual schools. So you can be able to read the report and see what's happening to your property taxes here in Dummerston, as well as to the school here in Dummerston, as well as the high school, which we all share. I have been serving there for the past 40 years. I'm happy to continue serving. If somebody is interested in serving, please come talk to me. And I'm happy to not serve as well. But I do love budgets, and I do love school funding programs, as you've mentioned before. The budget will be voted on May 18 at 7:00 PM. March 10. They do. Can't read my own scroll. March 18 at 7:00 PM, with the NHS gym, no childcare available. Just like this meeting, if you don't... Just like this meeting, if you don't show up, you do not vote. Last year, we had 242 people from the district show up, which means that each vote got to pass about $275,000. So if you like to feel like you have power and pass your budgets, there is your chance. Last year also, I'd like to point out that Dummerston, since formation, had always had the largest percentage of registered voters show up at about 2%. We were surpassed by Gilford last year with 2.8%. So Dummerston, we've got to keep up our civic duty and show up and vote. You vote an appropriation of the school district budget, but changes can be made from the floor and it has happened. So if you have thoughts about the budget, if you want the budget to pass, you have to show up. Half of life is showing up. That's what my mom taught me. If anybody has questions on the budget, you can reach out to me. I'm kind of the best way to do that. Grab it now, at the end of the meeting, and I'm having to answer questions and exchange contact information. The budget this year will be going up about 1%. Unfortunately, because property values in Dummerston have increased substantially and you pay half people on ease on the basis of their property value, taxes in Dummerston will be increasing by 6%. However, the governor and the legislature have indicated they would need to appropriate more money to the Ed Fund because they're committed to not having taxes increase anywhere. So you just could be voting for an amount to appropriate. The tax actual rate will be determined once everybody has voted on their budgets and the legislature and the governor have agreed on how much money goes to the Ed Fund. It's concluded, but it's actually, so that has not changed in the last 10 years or so. Christine, are you getting anything?
Thank you, Christina. Is there other business to come before the body? Up front here?
Magdalena Lucas has something to present at the town of Dummerston, that we, the residents of Dummerston, resolved to formally request that our governor, Phil Scott, publicly reaffirm his commitment to upholding the rule of law, protecting the rights of Vermonters and the Vermont Constitution amidst federal overreach, even if confronted with federal threats related to funding or other matters. Furthermore, we encourage him to proactively leverage the authority and engage with his colleagues nationwide to advocate for the protection of the rights for government personnel, for women's health and reproductive rights, for immigrants, for climate protection, for the proper education of our children, the freedom of the press, and for any and all individuals regardless of race, religion, ability, or sexual identity or orientation. Additionally, we call on him to work with his colleagues on both the state and federal level to safeguard critical services such as Medicare, Medicare, Social Security, which are essential to the well-being of all Vermonters.
So Magdalena, you are offering this as a non-binding town meeting resolution?
Yes, I am.
Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
We have multiple seconds. So the motion has been made and seconded. And I think I'd like to read it again and then I have a copy here that I can hand to you. And then we'll open it up for discussion. The resolution as presented says, "We, the residents of Dummerston, resolve to formally request that our governor, Phil Scott, publicly reaffirm his commitment to upholding the rule of law, protecting the rights of Vermonters and the Vermont Constitution amidst federal overreach, even if confronted with federal threats related to funding or other matters. Furthermore, we encourage him to proactively leverage his authority and engage with his colleagues nationwide to advocate for the protection of the rights for government personnel, for women's health and reproductive rights, for immigrants, for climate protection, for the proper education of our children, the freedom of the press, and for any and all individuals regardless of race, religion, ability, or sexual identity or orientation. Additionally, we call on him to work with his colleagues on both the state and federal level to safeguard critical services such as Medicare, Medicare, and Social Security, which are essential to the well-being of all Vermonters." Magdalena, is there anything you wanted to say about this, or is it self-explanatory?
It is self-explanatory. At the scale of the, we need to speak up and we cannot be quiet.
Can we hold the mic up so everyone can hear?
In this time, we just can't afford to be quiet and town meeting is such an opportunity for us as towns to kind of lay the groundwork for the fact that we are awake and thinking and hopefully being proactive about what may or may not be going on. That's all.
Any questions or comments about the motion on the floor? Yes. Thank you, Dawson.
My name is John Madison. I'd like to add an amendment to protection of personal data and privacy. Amongst the current issues in the amendment, this was not mentioned, but I think is as important as it will perform.
So John has made a motion to amend the motion on the floor by adding to the list the protection of personal data and privacy. Do I have that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. The motion on the floor now is to add that wording to the original motion, to amend it by adding that wording. Any conversation about that? Any questions about that? Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, Paul. Is there a second to John's motion? It's seconded by multiple people, okay. So the motion on the floor now is to amend the main motion by adding protection of personal data and privacy to the motion that Magdalena gave us. I'm hearing no, I'm seeing no questions, so we will go to a vote. All those in favor of the amendment to the motion on the floor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. So the main motion, which we return to now, has been amended to include protection of personal data and privacy. Any questions on the main motion? Are you ready for the question? All right. All those in favor, and I'm not going to read it again, you've read it twice, but, and you understand the addition of a represent of data and privacy. All those in favor of this non-binding resolution, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. Anything else under other business? Okay. I will clarify, as I understand it-- Oh, yes, okay. I'm going to say one more thing about what we just did, and that is that my understanding is with a non-binding resolution directed to Governor Scott, that's something that the town clerk would send a copy of and explain that it was passed by this body. Okay. Yes?
I'm Priscilla Adler and I'm with the Cemetery Committee and I just want to let people know that we're considering for the town cemeteries, we're considering bringing burials and we make requests and put from the town, for the townspeople in the near future. So just an invite. Thank you.
Thank you, Priscilla. Anything else under other business? In that case, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. And that's usually made by Ruth, and she's not here. Jo! Jo moves that we adjourn. Is there a-- Oh, Julianne, that's right. Forgive me. Before we adjourn, not after, before we adjourn, so I'm sorry, Jo, I'm removing your ability to move that we adjourn because Julianne Egan has, our principal, has a very interesting presentation to show us and she's going to be presenting that now, so I hope you all stay and watch. Thank you.
So, hi, everybody. My name is Julianne Egan and I'm principal of Dummerston School. Thank you so much. I think it's really important to continue the tradition of hearing about your community school at Town Meeting Day and to have an opportunity to just think about every amazing child who attends this school and is here every day and will be here bright and early tomorrow morning. So partly this, what I'm doing here is really just some like show and tell with you about this wonderful school. This is my sixth year as Dummerston School principal, which is incredible to think about. I have actually been teaching in this district for about, I taught here for about 12 years in Brattleboro, and so for some of you, if you're thinking, "She looks so familiar," it might be because I taught your child, like in high school or middle school. I taught at BUHS, I taught at BAM, so you might know me from around those places. I also raised my own two children in this district and they are now launched as adults. So I really have a strong commitment to this district. I have a very, a lot of passion for public school in general and public school in Dummerston, Vermont, so I'm incredibly grateful to work in this community and I could talk to you for hours about how much I love this school and the staff and the students in it. I mean, I could be here all day, but I know you've already had a long meeting, so I'm just going to show you a few points. If you're new to this community or it's been a while since you've been in the school, you know, we're, our population right now is about 158 students. We are actually graduating a small eighth grade class. They've been little all the way through and they remained a small class and they're graduating this year. They're a wonderful group. So right now, we're at 158 students. I anticipate we'll be closer to about 170 next year with that small group graduating on. Our younger grades have really had classes, you know, we've had classes of about 19 or 20, so that's really exciting for Dummerston. This is our sixth year of having public pre-K, so if you haven't walked around the campus, please do. We have a thriving pre-K at Dummerston School. We actually have the whole west end of our building designated as the Early Learning Center, and so that houses our pre-K and kindergarten students and it's really designed with the early childhood learner in mind. So it's a beautiful space with a lot of opportunity for outdoor exploration, outdoor campuses, outdoor classrooms, I mean, that are happening over on that end, so that's something else for you to check out. Over on this side, as people know, is our middle school, so we're also so fortunate to have some middle school students here today and we're so fortunate to have our own middle school. We have a middle school that's grade five to eight and being able to have children from pre-K all the way through grade eight is remarkable. It's something that's become pretty, you know, rare, not only in Vermont, but, you know, in the nation, and it's a really exciting opportunity for us. We, if you come to Dummerston School during the day and if any of you would like to have a tour and like to see us in action when the students are here, please give me a call because I love to show people Dummerston School. I love the support from our community. We feel very well supported here and very well loved by the community in Dummerston. But all students, you know, all students go outside. These middle school students can tell you, every day, no matter what, no matter how cold it is, no matter if it's raining, students go outside. They have an opportunity to learn and play on our 20-acre campus. It includes a forest trail, outdoor classrooms, student-tended gardens, soccer and baseball fields, lots of play structures. We, here we are, gardening in the snow. Snow does not stop Vermont gardeners and it doesn't stop our pre-K students and kindergarten students and first grade students from getting out there. We have a robust visual arts program for students, library of media, tech instruction, instrumental music, chorus, sports, PE, so there's, you know, the core instruction is not just those four social studies, English, math, science, but there's a lot more to Students' Day at Dummerston School. I think what's important to really understand about us here is our core values. We really believe that all people involved in a school, the children, the adults, the staff, families, everybody really needs, in order to learn, a learning environment that prioritizes relationship building, autonomy, play and fun, challenging opportunities for learning and safety. And so when the learners in our community, whether you're little or big, if you experience those things, you will grow and change and learn together. Learning is risky business, takes a lot of bravery to learn new things. That's true for us when we're older and it's true when we're little, and we want to support all people who come to Dummerston School to feel confident and to feel like you're going to be supportive when you drive really the challenging work that we're asking you to do. We want our learners to develop skills in conflict resolution and communication and leadership. That's something we want to see all Dummerston School students develop, so when they get launched from eighth grade to the high school wherever and then beyond, they feel really confident that they have these interpersonal skills that we know are essential for us all to have as adults. If you've been to school board meetings, you might have heard a lot about an academic model called multi-layered systems of support. And without getting into a lot of pedagogical detail about that, that is the idea that, you know, at Dummerston School and really all the schools in our district, we really try to embrace each learner where they're at. Each learner is unique in terms of the skills that they're coming to, coming to us with and in terms of their strengths and challenges. And so the way we think of this idea of multi-layered systems of support is that all students, if you think about, like, if you were going to set up your guest room at your house in May, right, you would have sheet and a blanket for your guests, yes? So like at Dummerston School, all students get high-level curriculum in academics, social and emotional learning. Everybody gets high-quality core programming, which is like the sheet and the blanket, right? But like in Vermont in May, right, what happens? Something like suddenly you're freezing or, you know, for whatever, you know, you might be a sleeper who gets hot at night, so you, you don't need that. You know, you might have a down comforter that you put on as another layer because you need that in order to feel okay and to sleep well. When you don't need it any longer, you take off that comforter. So with multi-layered systems of support, all children are getting learning together, core instruction, and then some children may need more. They may need an extra blanket, they may need more support in some missing skills, or they may need enrichment because they're actually right at a higher level and so they need opportunities for higher-level work. So that is what MLSS looks like in action. We have, like I mentioned, here's our students studying art. So the, you know, beautiful thing at Dummerston School is that we have students studying concepts as part of their literacy curriculum, their humanities work, and they can work with Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Ferguson is the art teacher who ties his art curriculum to the humanities curriculum that students are experiencing in their classroom. Here we are, these are just showing you some beautiful pictures. So here we are with our band. Students have the option, starting in fourth grade, to take, to take band. And then we have art celebrations where our school is transformed, the middle school hallway is transformed into an art gallery for pre-K to eight. Students come into this room and get to hear performances from our jazz band, our concert band. We sometimes have marching band, so that is our, our programming there. Here we are, more band students. These events are all promoted on our Facebook page and our website and the community is welcome to come. If you have not been to a school concert lately, if you have not been to a middle school music concert lately, you should come. It's really inspiring. We have, we actually just finished up our winter sports programming just this last week. A little bit of a difficult season because ironically, all the-- because ironically, all the snow on Thursdays actually caused us to have to cancel winter sports on a couple of weeks. But we have continued the tradition of having students go to the mountain, Mount Snow, for six weeks of ski or snowboard instruction. We have students who go to the rink in Brattleboro, and we have students here who stay with Southern Vermont Natural History Museum and actually get out on the trails and in the woods near our school and our nature explorers for those six weeks. So that has actually just concluded. We have a robust farm-to-school and nature-based learning program at Dumerson School now. Again, if you walk around the campus, especially if you come over the summer and you feel like taking a stroll here, please do because we have trails and we have some lovely garden spaces for you to sit in or just look at. Our students tend gardens and harvest from the gardens and nibble sometimes during recess. And these are actually new beds that were established last year that are right near our pavilion. Here we are, last year, we actually boiled last year. This is our first year boiling. We got a gram from the Agency of Agriculture, and we were able to purchase a whole system for making our own maple syrup. So that was an exciting development. Last year, we had families come and help us boil. In, if you're a Dumerson School family, you know that we use a framework at Dumerson School called developmental designs. And essentially, that is a set of practices that we all use pre-K to eight so that our students really have a sense of what to expect every day at Dumerson School, and they know that when they come to Dumerson School, they're going to have certain experiences that are really going to help them build community and access their learning. And so you'll see our students spend a lot of time, for example, in buddy classrooms. So we may have, you know, seventh graders working with pre-K, for example. We have a social contract every year. You'll see it on the wall. Every year, the students actually create a social contract. This is not Miss Egan's contract. This is not a contract created by teachers from 10 years ago or 20 years ago. This is a contract that Dumerson School students work together to create, and they do that every year. So, you know, thinking about the importance of civics education and democracy and the concept that in order for us to function as a group, we all need to agree to some ideas together. We're going to give up some of our individual needs for the health of the group. That is something that we want Dumerson School students to start practicing and understanding from the time they are pre-K all the way through eighth grade. Here we are, all school meetings happen a few times, a couple times a month, and so students lead these meetings with their teacher, playing games, making announcements, acknowledging other students for following our social contract. Sometimes we have special all-school meetings, so here we are, having a solstice celebration outside. That was just this past December. Here's her buddy classrooms. Can't take enough pictures of buddy classrooms. They are just really wonderful to see. So we have pre-K students. Here's a pre-K student who, you know, just has started at this school, but because of buddy classroom time and because of all-school meeting, these pre-K students, they're four years old, they know all about Dumerson School. They know who's who and what's what, and they come in and they're like, "Is it, are we having buddy time today, Miss Egan? Is it all-school meeting day?" I mean, they're really, they're really excited about it. You know, because here's a real fundamental belief that I personally have as a, you know, and with my teacher slash principal hat on, and we, as a Dumerson School community, really believe in, is that all students at Dumerson School are leaders. There are no like people, you know, there's no like, "Oh, these certain students are leaders," or "These students..." These students aren't. All students are leaders, and so they all work together to take ownership of their learning and really to make a difference together. We have some middle school leadership opportunities, so we do have an asset team, which is a special leadership team that looks at our school climate data and really helps us to make this be the best school it can be. We also have middle schoolers who serve as mentors in the younger grades. But we also really have, you know, our youngest children really, we want them to really feel like they should be taking care of this community and taking care of each other and helping to make decisions. One thing we're gearing up for right now, it's going to happen in a couple of weeks, on the topic of students as leaders, is students at Dumerson School lead their own conferences in the spring. We know from educational research, you know, and best practice that when children, the people doing the speaking are the people doing the learning. So when children are speaking about their learning, when they're telling you what they learned and they're showing you evidence of that learning, that really allows them to consolidate their understanding and move forward with a lot of agency and autonomy as learners. And so we do this, again, youngest grades, pre-K students, four-year-olds, we have them leading their families when they come in in March and showing their families their learning environment and talking to them about what they're learning, and we do that all the way through eighth grade. So these pictures, I just love these pictures of, you know, students showing, "This is what I'm learning. Look at this." You know, this is what we want to see. If you ever observe any school or any classroom and you ask the student like, "Hey, what are you learning here? What are you doing?" It's so interesting what, you know, how they respond is so informative because they are the learners and they're the most important people in this whole equation here. Here they are, more learners showing their families what they can do, what they've learned. So this will be coming up in just a couple of weeks. We'll be holding our next round of student-led conferences. Another example of leadership, we have, you know, we brought back the spelling bee. So, you know, that's another thing that kind of hadn't been a practice recently, and some people might think of spelling bees as, oh, they're very nerve-wracking, and they are. But really, our students, just, it's so impressive how they come up, take a chance, come up and try their hat at spelling in front of a crowd, and the community is so supportive that it's a really exciting day. So we have a couple of students going to the state spelling bee in just a couple of weeks. Here we are at another all-school meeting, a special Pride celebration that we had, actually, that should say 2024. That was just last June during Pride Month. We have still our middle school sports program, and so we have soccer in the fall. We have basketball in the winter. We do offer baseball in the spring, although there's been more people interested in lacrosse these days, so we haven't always had a baseball program, but we can combine with other schools. We can combine with Putney in order to field teams. And our students here are also able to take the bus to BAMs to be able to take part in sports that they have there that we don't have there, such as flag football. Here's our soccer team. We have after-school clubs as well. This is our second year with really robust after-school club programming. And so this is for grades four to eight, and it's everything from like Dungeons and Dragons to board games, to theater, to art, jazz band, cooking. So this is another way we want students to feel like they can extend their day here at Dumerson School and spend more time with each other in a more relaxed setting with kids from different grades and teachers that they don't usually have. We have different Dumerson School staff and volunteers who participate in this program. We have a lot of family and community engagement. If you are wondering like, "How can I get involved in Dumerson School?" We have a world, we have, we have plenty of opportunities for you. So we have a leadership council, of course, and I don't know if any, if you could raise your hand if you're on the leadership council. So we have several people out there who are on the leadership council. We also have a family involvement team. Raise your hand if you're on that. So we have different groups that really work as, you know, on supporting our school, on improving our school. And those organizations, other community members can come on board and like support the family involvement team or the leadership council. All of those meetings are open. We would love to have you involved in that. We have a lot of family engagement events that happen that have become like traditions. So we have, you know, beginning of the year, ice cream social, family bingo, pumpkin walk night. You know, these things that, again, we want students and families to feel excited about, like the changing seasons and all of the different things that happen at Dumerson School. And here we are at our pumpkin walk night. We have explored around Dumerson School, so thank you so much to our neighbors who have allowed us to walk through and explore vernal pools in the neighborhood. And here we are with Southern Vermont Natural History Museum taking a look at vernal pools. Thank you so much to the West Dumerson Volunteer Fire Department that's been involved in helping us host Safety Day with Rescue Inc. and the Sheriff Department. You know, our students are out here actually getting to know their neighbors and actually learning a lot about what does it mean to be someone who works in the community, who really volunteers to take care of people who live in this town. As I mentioned last year, thanks to COVID-related funds and Thompson Trust grant funds and local budget and so many donations from all of you, we definitely have expanded the offerings we have outside. So if you haven't walked around Dumerson School lately, I really encourage you to do so. We, just this past year, put the finishing touches on our pavilion project. I do love this picture. This is one of our eighth graders, Evan Jandy Topping, working with Mr. Bailey on laying down the brick floor. Evan has also been part of a group of students who have learned to sheet rock with Mr. Bailey and done some sheet rocking at the school. Those are the kinds of things you can do in a small school with your middle school. That's really just, can't be beat. It's really, you know, it's really an incredibly special opportunity to support a student like Evan becoming an eighth grader now, and he's really proficient at these skills. Moving forward, or sorry, this past year too, if you have, take a look at the library if you haven't yet today. We did a big library redesign and remodeling. We had PCB testing and abatement. That was a pretty big project. We've been still working on asbestos abatement. We're almost all done with that. Floor tile replacement. We've installed more play structures. We buried the propane tank. Those of you who know that there was a propane tank, you might be wondering where it is. It's underground. We're going to be installing energy-efficient windows in the LC, rebranding the soccer field. You know about the walking trail. We're putting up an Early Learning Center pavilion. We're doing some security updates with our, with our keyless entry and kind of modernizing all that. You know, just here, just as some final information, it takes a lot of people to do all this work, you know, and Christina was talking about the budget process and coming to the budget boat on February 18. It's, ah, sorry, March 18. You know, there's a lot of people behind the scenes who support our students. And so I'm going to put this on our website. You know, this slideshow will live there, so if you'd like to take a closer look at it, it just gives you a sense of what our budget supports in terms of staffing, what it did support this past year. There we all are. There's a lot of us, right? There we all are at the first day of school, you know, spending the day together, getting ready to teach. So that's our, this is our, these are all the people that do the great work associated with our school. And I just want to thank all of these people who support our school. Many of you are in the audience. Thank you so much. Please thank these people. Thank these organizations in whatever way you can. And come to our leadership council meetings. We'd love to have you there. So that's, that's Dumerson School.
Thank you, Julianne. That was remarkable. We are lucky to have such a good school. Roger, do you have business?
We're so wonderful to do that. Everybody hasn't had a chance to do that yet. Stop by the library. Thank you.
All right. Any other business to come before the meeting? All right. Oh, Lou.
Lou Nelson, I just want to thank everybody for a great town meeting. Thank you.
Thanks to all for a great town meeting. And now, is there a motion to adjourn? Joe, is there a...
Motion to adjourn.
Joe moves. And is there a second? Thank you, Michelle. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody want to say no and stay longer?
Sure.
Yes, we did after lunch.
Oh, I was in the library.
Oh, there you go. You missed out, Joanie. Thank you all. Have a good rest of your day.